We appreciate y'all coming out tonight. And we're gonna start this evening with the public hearing and then we'll call the meeting to order after that. Mr. Rob?
All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody. We are having a public hearing concerning a application for rezoning and application for annexation. It's requesting a reclassification of approximately 0.651 acres along Seventeenth Street. The present zoning classification of the affected property is County Residential 8M or R8M, and the reclassification shall be to City Residential 8R8. Before I get started with the public hearing, I'd like to let everyone know that the City of Tifton has written public hearing procedures, the City of Tifton Standards for Exercising Zoning Powers, and a copy of Georgia Conflicts of Interest laws are available to hand out in our post for public review. As I said, the matter under consideration is the rezoning of some property along Seventeenth Street, and I'd like to ask the council members three questions. Have any of these applicants or opponents of the application contributed at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years? The applicants of the Tifton Board of Education and Eastern Woodlawn Investments LLC?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family own property that would be impacted by a rezoning application, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have an interest in a business that would be impacted by this rezoning application, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Yes, I do.
All right.
A business relationship with one or more of the entities.
All right. Well, Mr. Ellers, if you would, when it comes down to consideration of the ordinance, if you just recuse yourself because of that interest. Okay? Before going into any public input, I'm gonna ask Mr. Burke Crowe if he would come and inform the citizenry as far as what this reclassification and annexation involves.
Our department, Environment Management Department, received an application for annexation of two tracts of land listed as T-032169, T-032170, respectively, for a total of 1.651 acres. And then the subsequent following of that is a rezon from Tifton Residential 8M, the City of Tifton Residential 8. It was approved unanimously by a planning and zoning commission at their last regular meeting, and the request of the department is that we allow annexation and rezon as listed.
Mr. Crowe, did this go before Planning and Zoning Commission as well?
It did.
And what was their recommendation?
As I said just a second ago, it was approved unanimously.
Very good. Thanks, sir. All right. First, I'll take, you know, anybody that wants to make any public comments as far as wanting this classification approved. Is anyone here that would like to speak in favor of approving the application for rezoning? Is there one here that would like to speak in opposition to the reclassification of this zoning? Mayor, I see no public input. I'd ask that the public hearing be closed.
It is closed. Now, we'll call the meeting to order. Vice Mayor Johnny Terrell is on the speakerphone with us. I want everybody to be in prayer for his wife, who's going into an operation. Johnny, she's not in the operating room yet, is she?
Yes, they just took her in. About fifteen minutes ago.
Well, let's just have a moment of silence if we can. Thank you very much. And Mr. Per.
Thank you.
Will not be here this evening. We're gonna have the prayer, and once the prayer is finished, we'll stand up and face this beautiful flag back here and do a pledge of allegiance. But Wes, I've been so kind to offer to do our prayer tonight. Wes, if you'd start us off, sir.
Folks, we pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the many gifts that you bestow upon us each and every day, Lord. We ask that you watch over us as you guide us to do your work. Lord, we ask that you be with our men and women overseas fighting for our freedoms. Without those brave men and women, we cannot practice our freedoms today. Lord, we ask that you be with the needy, be with the ill, and be with the weak, Lord, as we know that you are the ultimate provider and ultimate healer. Lord, we also ask that you be with the leaders of our country, the leaders of our state, and the leaders of our city, Lord, so that we may do your work. In these things, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one place, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank y'all. We're gonna skip that first item because today is a holiday. Then we have a presentation by the Keep Tifton Beautiful Board. Before you come up, let us tell you, we thank you for all that you do. We're gonna limit you to about ten minutes. I think you can do it by five, but you got ten minutes. Whoever's doing the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, your council, Brother Terrell.
Good evening.
I know that you all have heard and seen the media in a relationship to an incident that occurred recently in Cordial. It seems that the solid waste contractor was dumping the recycle bins in the landfill. That episode brought to the attention of the Keep Tifton Beautiful Board last month. The fact that, realizing that you're working on a new contract with a solid waste contractor for the City of Tifton and the unincorporated parts of Tifton County, we feel it's necessary and important for us to remind you all early on of our concern. Now, I know that as elected officials, you've spent a lot of time studying the cost of operating your landfill. And you know the cost of purchasing more land and opening another cell in the landfill. Big, big dollars. In order to prolong that cost, economize on where you are and what you have, it's important that we continue to recycle in Tifton and Tifton County. The rumor on the street, of course, is that it's not gonna happen when you have a new contract. Now, that's, of course, the rumor, okay? The board that you and the county commissioners have appointed collectively would like to offer this letter and these thoughts to you all. Many of you have seen the recent news story broadcast on WALB-TV about the City of Americas, I'm sorry, I said Cordial Americas, and their recycling plan, or more specifically, how the collected recyclables were going to the landfill. This story exemplifies the concerns of Keep Tifton Beautiful regarding the current contract negotiations with the Golden Environmental for solid waste collection, disposal, and recycling. Keep Tifton Beautiful is dedicated to reducing the impact of solid waste in our community through integrated programs, including source reduction, reuse, recycling, composting, and the education about landfills and waste to energy. We consider the recycling plant a valuable community resource toward this goal. Local businesses and industries utilize this resource for document destruction as well as recycling. The Tifton County's recycling program directly reflects the values of the community and has an impact on attracting new business and industry. We, the Keep Tifton Beautiful Board, respectively implore you to demand in the new contract with Golden Environmental the continuation of the current recycling plan at a minimum and expand upon if it's practical. We also request the clear stipulation that collected recyclables be properly recycled as intended by our community and impose penalties if these materials are landfilled. We do not wish for our citizens to feel the sense of betrayal we imagine the people of Americas have regarding the collection of recyclables in their community. Thank you for your consideration of this important matter, and we have listed the entire board here. And in the back, we have about three rows of folks. Stand up, please. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That concludes our presentation, sir.
Dave, and Ricky, it's my understanding we're gonna have that in this new policy. And Larry and I talked about it today, and he said that we do have those intentions. Am I right about that?
I can't say because I haven't been involved in their last meetings that I had been invited to them, so I can't speak to that.
Mayor, that's, you're correct. That is going to be part of the contract.
Yeah, we sure thought it would.
And I think addressing the concerns is gonna be a matter of making sure that what we have in the contract is properly, of course, make sure it recycles, get what it's supposed to.
This is a good letter, and to be sure, what this deal with this season. Thank you, Dave. Thank y'all for coming. And Dave, I'd have given you more time if you'd have needed it. Gee, I think you did.
If I'd needed it, I'd take it. Thank you.
You think you did it, but you didn't. You did it all in five minutes, so you're good. All right, thank y'all again. At this time, we would like to approve the... Johnny, you still with us?
Yes.
At this time, we'd like to approve the council agenda, please.
I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second and further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please. Say if I raise your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Now, we have a time where our citizens get to come and talk with us, and one of our good citizens that I know quite well, Mr. J. Brian Bergeron, has put his name here. Lives in 2123 Yanklown Drive. Actually, that's not where he lives. J. Brian, when you get out there, just tell us where you live, sir.
Yes, sir.
Your home address.
Mayor, he'll have five minutes.
Yes, okay, and he'll be keeping up with the tempo.
He'll be. I live at 409 North Park. I'm one of the guys that y'all were fighting about, that didn't know y'all were fighting about, but I live in the Detroit district. But I'm here about Dream and Gymnastics. Fourteen and a half years ago, I bought a piece of property off Yanklown Drive, and regardless of how it happened, I annexed into the city. At that time, fourteen years ago, I was promised that the city would pay .26 miles of a road in front of my building. And not to get a laugh, but I'm just kinda here to check on the progress, to see how that's going, because fourteen years later, I still got a dirt road that's really an embarrassment to the facility I built and to the City of Tifton when we have 2,500 people come in and it's ringing. So I would really like to know if there's even been any discussion or if I'm on any kind of list, or, you know, I'd just like for the city to keep, you know, to keep, to do what they said they'd do when I annexed it. I know everybody's looking at everybody, but Wes, you don't know anything about it, probably.
I think that would probably, you know, Larry would probably...
Larry would be the best. I know that preceded us. I've been here seven years, and the others have been here three and four years. But I have heard about that from Larry.
I have, Mayor.
And I know that was another council that said that, one of them sitting right out there. And I'm sure they meant well when they said it, because I know everyone, but I know the economy hit us pretty bad, and I'm not gonna make any excuses in 2008. But why don't we have you sit down with Larry?
We opened in 2001, and we were promised, and Larry knows.
Yeah.
And it's fourteen years later, and I'm still sitting there with the... And I sent you, and I sent both of you an email in the middle of the night when I had to get somebody to come toe me out, because you can't pass there. So I, again, I'm just, you know, a friendly citizen that would like to have an answer that he was promised about fourteen years ago.
Can we put this, can we, you and I sit down?
Yes, and I'll get with Larry and you, and we can see if we can see where this is. I don't know what you think about it.
I know, I know.
Johnny, that'd be your district, if I'm not mistaken. That would be Johnny Terrell's district. So just get Johnny involved, and then we'll bring something back to the full board.
Okay.
All right, appreciate y'all's time.
We're sorry and thank you.
Johnny wants to... Go ahead, Johnny.
Sir, concerning your property on Yanklown Drive, I've driven through there several times when it rains heavily, and you are exactly right. There's no way to get through until you're public. And being in my district, I would appreciate it if the city manager and Johnny get with me so I can talk to you about the timeframe on this thing.
Johnny, I will tell Larry when he gets back in, and then we'll set up a time to meet and get our heads together.
All right, all right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else signed up for the citizen that put out soon? Nobody's running towards podium. Thank you all, and we'll close there at this time. Next item is the approval of minutes. We've got several items here. I guess this'll all go at one time, several different times. Do I have a motion?
Go.
I'll second.
I got a motion, second and further discussion. Seeing none, please, citizen, if you approve, please, say if I raise your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
That is the order. We now have a consent agenda. Generally, I ask if anybody wants anything taken out from the consent agenda. We usually wrap those up in several things, and we don't do that because we're trying to be in a hurry. We do that because we dealt with them over the workshop and so forth and so on, but...
Mayor, I think that you had discussed with me that you own the business, the building where the Red Apple's gonna be located.
That's correct.
And I think since they're making an application, it'd be best that you recuse yourself in that matter.
That's right. I had agreed on that. And I'll come back in when you get through with that.
Well, I think maybe the thing to do at this point, Mayor, is go ahead and move that from the consent agenda.
Yeah.
And move it on down, and then we can go ahead and do the consent agenda on the red...
Okay, so we're gonna move item two. What, you wanna write the board, is it?
Yes, that'd be good.
Okay, right now, we're gonna deal with the consent agenda, items three, items four. Is either one of those items, does anybody wants to come out of consent agenda?
No.
Okay, well, I'll accept the motion for consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve items three and four under the consent agenda.
Second.
I've got a motion, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, say if I raise your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
That will move on to item two, and Johnny, if you've got your notes, say you can take over when I leave, or...
Johnny, this is Rob Wilmot. The mayor's gonna recuse himself for consideration of the alcoholic beverage license for the Red Apple, so if you'll, I'll put the purpose of that resolution, if you'll chair this for us, okay?
All right.
All right, just like the mayor has left the room, so you'd like to entertain a motion on that resolution for the approval of new alcoholic beverage license for the Red Apple.
I'd like to put a motion for the approval of alcohol beverage for the Red Apple.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
All right.
Okay.
You have a motion in the second, Mr. Terrell.
I have a motion in the second. Are all approved, raise your hands, aye.
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 All right, that's...
Opponents, none.
That's it.
The ayes have it.
The ayes have it. All right, we'll get the mayor back in. Thank you, Mr. Terrell.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we're ready to move on into the ordinances.
Okay, we're moving to the ordinances, order number five, providing for downtown parking requirements.
Mayor, as you may recall, this was worked shot at our last meeting, and there was just a few issues that came up, and so we, this has been revised. There was an observation that the on-street parking did not, the prohibition of on-street parking for the weekday downtown area and the Saturday downtown area did not include owners. So as you can see from the new revised ordinance, we have included owners as prohibited parker. And for the purpose of that section, owners would include any person or entity that leases a building or any portion thereof in the weekday downtown area. That language is now the same also for the Saturday downtown area, which was basically designed to include those people that maybe leased a booth at these various markets, I guess, lack of a better word. The other change, it took the Friday out of Thanksgiving. It used to be Thursday and Friday. That was excluded from the prohibition of downtown and Saturday parking. Since Black Friday is a big shopping day, that Friday was now taken out, and the exclusion now will just apply to Thanksgiving on Thursday. And so those are the changes that were made after our discussion at the workshop.
And remind me, the new ordinances take effect at 5:00 p.m. The old one was 6:00 p.m.
That's correct. Well, I don't have the old one from...
It's been five for quite a while.
All right, so it is ten, it's been five...
Ten, it remains five.
Then it remains five.
Now, take care of that problem, you and I, to discuss, if somebody comes home early tomorrow. Are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, providing for downtown parking requirements, ordinance, providing for downtown parking requirements.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I do have a question, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I've gotten, I thought that the lady that wrote the email that was concerned, you know, she was a resident of downtown, single female, was kinda worried about having to park a ways away. I thought that was all handled very well, but I've also gotten a couple of calls. My question is, how is this gonna be enforced? And I always like to use scenarios, so let me just use a scenario. Let's say that I'm a resident of downtown, and I decide I wanna run home for lunch, and while I'm there, I stop in Brenner's, pick up my to-go plate, and then I stop by the drugstore there on the corner and pick up my prescription, then I run upstairs and have lunch, but I've come back and I've got a ticket. I'm now a patron of downtown as well. Is that something that could be excused if I say, look, I'm, you know, yes, or how does...
That's not the spirit of the ordinance.
Right.
That's not a problem.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to be sure, 'cause, you know, it's, we just need to be so careful. Our downtown is so fragile, we wanna do the right thing. And I know Lucretia, I know you've been handing out the information, so I think that's good to make sure that we have as much input and knowledge, you know, so that our citizens know what's, and the patrons of the downtown and the residents, everybody know what's going on, so thank you for that, just wanted to be sure.
That was a good question. Anybody else got any questions about the parking ordinance?
Julie, what you showed me earlier about...
Rob's got that, it doesn't...
It doesn't pertain to anything?
No, not to the, I don't, it has anything to do with the factual ordinance or the ordinance. It may have something to do about who owns the parking lot.
Okay. Isn't that part of the free parking, free public parking, though? Would they have a... Mayor, do you know what I'm talking about?
I just saw it briefly.
Yeah, it's a...
Where is it?
It would, I don't know...
Tifton Parking Company, is that what it is? I'm just curious.
Ms. Smith showed me this about two minutes before the meeting, but there's a, evidently there's a Tifton Parking Company that have sold shares, and this is for the construction or assisting the construction of the Cato Night Parking Area, Leckra.
That's the assumption. I'm not sure, I don't know that. I had, the first time that I saw, that was about thirty minutes before our meeting started, so I just wanted to share it with you.
Julie, what's the date on that?
It's in 1964.
1964.
You know what that is? That's back when the furniture company was down in Burn later on.
Uh-huh.
But Roy Rankin, Roy Jackson bought that property, and that's where the, that's where the Labor Department is.
Okay, so that's all gone away? I don't know.
I know there was a big star.
When I saw it, I was like, well, that's the end of that all property, after we called it public property, that, oh, I mean, that's...
And I don't know, but...
Rob's gonna research it and see what it is, but it didn't seem to have any, anything that pertained to the ordinance necessarily, but we do need to see what that is. It looks like a legitimate document, Lucretia's.
You might want to speak with Ms. Stone. He's actually, he has the file on that, and as you said, it was back in the sixties, so that predates our time, but he can tell you exactly who started it, where it was, and what it was all about.
Well, he was ten years old at the time, so... I'll look into this, Mayor. Like I said, I don't think it has anything to do with the ordinance. It's gonna, it probably doesn't have any effect on the availability of parking, but we need to check and make sure.
Well, as part of the history of how downtown has progressed as well, so certainly for influential purposes, I think is a part of that, I'd say.
And I'll check into that.
Yeah, good. Okay.
Okay, any further questions? If not, I'll call on the question. Do I have a motion?
We already...
Do you have a motion in the second?
You need a vote.
No, no, I'm waiting for the, did I say motion?
Maybe.
I'm in a... No, I'm in a, no, we got the motion in the second, we're discussing, it's ready for a vote.
Yes, sir.
And I wake up here just... All in favor, please, say if I raise your right hand and saying aye.
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 And that's unanimous with the people that are here.
And that was given effect now? What does this one help with?
It goes into effect upon adoption.
I'm y'all out in the audience, I'm not asking you to say anything, but by shaking my head, y'all think this is a pretty good idea?
Yes.
And the people that are in the downtown, Julie has part of it, and Johnny has part of it, so they're very interested, well as me and Hope. So thank you, it was hard, so thank you for all you did, Larry, and you didn't even charge us for that, did you?
I pray I didn't.
Well, we don't care, it was good work, and we thank you for it. We're gonna move on to item number six, and that is the ordinance providing for annexation of .651 acres located 502 West Seventeenth Street and 1704 South Ridge Avenue, registered by the Tifton Board of Education and Eastern Woodlawn Investments LLC. This is Dr. WoodX14000-002.
All right, Mayor, I recuse myself.
Yes. Oh, when you step outside, you have to put your fingers in your ears.
We have to hear you, too.
Okay. Mr. Ellers? I think maybe, you know, while he's stepping out, we're gonna consider item number seven as well.
Yeah.
So I would assume, just for the record, we'll, you know, you'll recuse yourself for items six and seven, both the annexation and the rezoning classification.
That's correct.
And we'll call you back when we're through with those two.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Johnny, you're familiar with what's going on?
Yes.
Okay, and this will be item six, number seven. We'll take item six first. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the annexation of the property that we discussed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, say if I raise your right hand, saying aye.
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 That is unanimous. Item number seven is the other ordinance. Do I have a motion?
This would be the ordinance for reclassification.
Right.
Two.
I'll second. I've got a motion, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, say if I raise your right hand, saying aye.
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 That is unanimous. Now, in other business, we have item number eight, and that's the discussion of the 9/114 council meeting. I think Labor Day's in there somewhere.
Yes, sir. We're requesting that it be postponed to September the 8th. I believe our environmental means that, advertise for public hearing or some sort of public input, so that is the reason that we're requesting it be only days.
Okay, I'm just looking through my calendar. Oh, gosh. I already had my calendar set up for that day. I can see into the future. Okay, so we need to vote on that, Mr. Terrell?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Johnny, what's on the floor now is to decide if we want to put the next council meeting on the 8th. meeting on the 8th of September, which is a Monday, because of Labor Day. So if I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
So move.
Second.
We got you. We got you, Mr. Terrell.
Okay, I hear first.
Hold on. We've got a second, some of the motions.
I got the motion in the second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
And that is your answer. Now, I'm fixing to go with the show. Is this meeting over? It's twenty minutes till seven.
Yes, the meeting is over, I think.
Does this mean...
I think we see where the problem is.
If Larry... Send a member of Larry's.
I'll try my best.
Yeah, and Chris.[1784.12]